Ukraine. And so this is highly relevant to the work of the Assembly. We are most grateful to you for coming along. So, without further ado, can I ask Mr. Cotter, who's unavailable direct, but is he online? I thought he was going to be online.
He is following, but he cannot speak online. Perfectly reasonable.
Okay, for technical reasons, he can hear but not speak. Okay? Okay, we sympathize with you. So, but, so this hearing is being recorded, so he will be able to see what's said and so on. But during our previous hearings on this report, we have experts on the issue of accountability for the crime of aggression through the establishment of international tribunals for the crime of aggression, as well as on the issue of accountability for war crimes, crimes against humanity and possible genocide committed in the context of the current aggression. Today, the aim is to focus on the topic that our rapporteur wants to cover in his final report, namely, the compensation for the damage and losses caused by Russia's aggression against Ukraine and the existing and proposed avenues to make this happen. Comprehensive accountability and justice cannot be achieved without the reparation, the damage caused to Ukraine and its citizens. And having said that, it sounds rather cold, doesn't it, in the light of the unspeakable behavior of the Russian authorities in destroying the basic infrastructure of Ukraine and thereby causing the people of Ukraine to suffer in untold hundreds of thousands from not having any heating or energy? I mean, it's just unspeakable. But anyway, that's my comment. But can I now ask Ms. Mudra to address us, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chaperson. Thank you, members of the committee and ladies and gentlemen. I'm really grateful for the invitation and the opportunity to be present here and to discuss with you very important issues for Ukraine. Democratic Europe supports Ukraine. We feel this political and diplomatic, financial and humanitarian support, and we thank every member state of the Council of Europe for that. And I believe we all agree that it's not just the war for Ukraine, but a global war, and that is putting international peace and security at risk. And we firmly believe that international community should act without leniency to hold Russian terrorist regime accountable for atrocities and destruction. Regrettably, every day, the aggressor causes new destruction on the territory of Ukraine. The material destruction is unimaginable, and it continues on daily basis: shattered cities, damaged vital infrastructure, environment and ecosystem, crypto economy amidst massive human losses. Therefore, there is a need to create a new and innovative compensation mechanism to collect, assess, and ultimately provide compensation for hundreds of claims against the Russian Federation and direct losses stemming from this aggression in the territory of Ukraine. On November 14th, the United National General Assembly, 94 states voted in favor of the resolution, which established the need to hold the Russian Federation accountable for violations of international law. Okay, should I be slower? Or? So, there was established the need to hold the Russian Federation accountable for violations of international law. There was established the need to create the international compensation mechanism for reparation of damages, loss and injury caused by Ukraine, caused to Ukraine by Russian Federation. And there was recommendation to the member states to create an international register of damage. Before that, in September and October and in November, political support for the creation of the compensation mechanism was expressed by the Council of Europe and the Parliamentary Assembly of the Council of Europe. We appreciate a lot these decisions. Once these resolutions have been passed, Ukraine started to implement this strongly voiced political willingness into practical steps. So I would like to briefly remind that the main concept of the international compensation mechanism is the construction of coherence system for securing a real compensation for damages caused by the aggression under multilateral international agreement. Fundamental provision of this international agreement is to establish and consolidate the responsibility of Russia for aggression and hostilities against Ukraine and stereo obligation of Russia to compensate material damages. The compensation mechanism shall provide for the establishment of the Compensation Commission, especially dedicated to consider compensation claims, the compensation fund, from which the compensation shall be paid, and an effective procedure of enforcement of the Commission's decisions. From the very beginning, we decided to take an incremental approach. And for further implementation of such a comprehensive mechanism, an effective instrument is needed, which will become a guarantee of the effective operation of the mechanism and the basis on which the design of the Compensation Commission itself will be built. And that is, as stated in both ANGA resolution and Committee of Ministries' resolution, the establishment of the International Register for Damage for Ukraine. That would serve to record in documentary form of evidence and claims information on losses, damage, on losses, injuries and damages to all natural and legal persons concerned, as well as the state of Ukraine caused by the Russian international wrongful acts in Ukraine, as well as to promote and coordinate evidence gathering process. Such a register of damage will be an integral part of the compensation mechanism. Or, in other words, it will set up as a secondary system that would set the infrastructure for a future compensation mechanism sought by Ukraine. At this stage, we propose that the register of damage is for Ukraine be partially modeled following the example of ANGA, a register of damage caused by the construction of the wall in the occupied Palestinian territory established on the ANGA resolution of December 2006. So, but we think that this register should be, should not be under the auspices of the United Nations, and it was not specifically mentioned in the ANGA resolution. That's why Ukraine is taking steps in order to set up the international organization. We have already, so, we have already conducted several forms of negotiations with the parties who would become interested in hosting this register of damage. The register will be independent. It will have demanded to aggregate information on claims and evidence supporting them, organize claims, assigning categories, grouping them into mass class claims where appropriate, assess claims from the point of view of prima facie and admissibility criteria, territoriality, temporality, causality, and ultimately record the admissible claims in the register. The register of damages would use rules of procedure developed by its bodies within the framework of principles set out in the founding treaty or charter. Register of damage for Ukraine is not intended to be set up as a claims commission with an adjudicating function at this stage. However, it is envisaged that the same international organization could be at later stage expanded to carry the adjudicator function. So, legal basis for the registry. The registry will be an independent organization, as I mentioned, founded by a multilateral international treaty or charter. Ukraine expects to make an initial proposal to join as founders to the host state, G7 members, European Union and its members. In principle, the organization should be open to all like-minded states and regional organizations in line with the spirit of the resolution of ANGA. At this stage, we are considering two approaches to setting up the register. One is to set a technical international organization by just two states, for example, Ukraine and the host state, in order for it to attain legal personality, so that it could go through all pre-set-up stage as quickly as possible, with other states joining in the process. The other approach is to focus on drafting a proper charter of the organization that would serve as its foundational instrument that would be signed by the participating states, with a pre-set-up commencing later or ongoing in peril and technically outside the organization. Selection of one of these choices will depend on the practice and preferences of the host country, as well as the outcome, on the outcome of the discussion with, at G7 level, which is anticipated next week. Register of damage will be composed of a secretariat with administrative functions and a commission with a supervisory and adjudicating function. The commission will have three main tasks: overview of the collection of the claims and evidence thereof, reviewing and assessing claims received, overseeing and directing the work of the secretariat. The commission will draft its own rules of procedure and operation based on the guidelines of the establishing document and existing best practice. It will also prepare the claim form or its digital equivalent to collect claims and evidences, as well as its established procedures for the collection, processing and registration of claims, including the claims eligibility criteria that will be directed by establishing instrument. The secretariat will assist to work on, for the work for the commission. Specifically, it will assist with the managerial aspects of the register and, including hiring staff, be in charge of daily operations of the register, including its financial aspects, assist with the collection, processing and preservation of claims and evidences, and managing the digital platform of the registry. The secretariat is headed by the secretary general, who will supervise the other members of the secretariat. Personal will include junior and senior legal staff, data analysts, computer, data experts, legal and administrative experts. The secretary general will be appointed by the commission or by the establishing parties. We opine the location of the register in one of the European cities is an advantage for reasons of convenience, cost and experience of hosting international organizations, as well as the readiness to provide financing, immunities and other necessary support. Register of damage for Ukraine should enjoy immunity and protect, protection with respect to its premises, equipment, servers, funds, bank accounts. The register will be secured sufficient office space in its location so as to be able to host a permanent secretariat, register of claim and evidence, and the operation of the commission. At present, the urgent task is to collect the claims. This will require developing, distributing and collecting claims forms. This will likely require also extensive travelings and dedicated personnel. In a second phase, the personnel required will be lawyers who can provide an additional review of the claims and statisticians, data analysts, who can process the claims and data and create databases of claims. Given the unprecedented scale of the damage, we discussed the use of digital platform for the registry to submit claims and evidences. And in this respect, work is ongoing with the digital platform, on designing the digital platform based on the DIA system, which is developed and used by the Ukrainian government. The digital platform will seek to automate the process to the extent possible, including submission of data, verification of identities of claimants, evidence such as title to property, geographic and temporal data. Taking into account that there will be extremely large amount of claims and submitted informations and documents in Ukrainian, the intention is to use various emerging technologies, such as character and language recognition and processing, machine learning to automate categorized claims and group them into mass group claims where possible and appropriate. Interaction of this register with the Ukrainian state registers on legal entities, on property rights, real estate, land register and others. As envisaged by the ANGA resolution, the work will definitely be coordinated with the collection of evidences conducted by the domestic law enforcement bodies and the International Criminal Court in the process of investigation of war crimes. And the secretariat will oversee the use of technology and coordinate the evidence gathering process with other holders of the collected evidences. Special focus will be dedicated to the issue of security of the digital system of register against physical and cyber attacks. It will be of utmost importance having known the possible sabotage Russians might undertake. Estimate budget requirements. Several factors affect the operating cost of the register of damage, including its location, personal cost and the number and complexity of claims. Drivers of cost will also include speed and order of priority of claims resolution and the length of the commission's mandate. Ukraine's proposal is that the register of damage for Ukraine be financed through voluntary contributions of participating states and international financial institutions. In this sense, was envisaged an aggregated budget from which capital and operating expenses of register would be covered. It can also make sense, however, that some forms of contributions are made in kind. For example, a host state could provide premises for the organization and its physical security. Core functions of the register of damage and steps to be taken once established. Once established, the commission will be tasked with collecting and reviewing claims. It is envisaged that claims will be submitted by natural persons, judicial persons, state-related entities and the state of Ukraine. Claims can roughly be grouped in the following categories: claims by displaced persons, claims related to war crimes, including victims of conflict-related sexual violence, claims for personal injury or death of an immediate family member, individual claims for damage or loss of property under certain threshold, for example, 150,000 dollars, individual claims for damage or loss of property above this threshold, claims of corporations, other private legal entities and public sector enterprises, and claims filed by the government of Ukraine and potentially other governments, including for damage caused to infrastructure and the environment. I also need to mention that our idea is that the enforceable monetary judgments of ICJ and ECHR Investment Tribunals against Russia's Federation on the losses caused by this aggression, as well as illegal annexation of Crimea, should also be monetized through this compensation mechanism. That is why we believe that Council of Europe should be very interested in facilitating of the establishment of this mechanism through encouraging its member states to join it. So, to sum up, we intentionally do not address the issue of setting up an compensation fund and the sources of its financing as we want to build out the needed infrastructure of claims collection and adjudication. In parallel, we are working with the states on the viable legal framework for seizing of frozen Russian assets and funds, and it will take time to introduce needed amendments to the domestic legislation of the participating parties. As an alternative to the option of seizing Russian asset, there might be financial instruments proposed by the parties to the agreement and international financial institutions, also similar to Iraq-Kuwait scheme of financing the compensation fund through revenues from oil and gas export deals of Russian Federation. It requires the consent of Russian Federation, but might be an option for paying reparations against confiscation of reserves once they are ready to talk about peace. Or establishment of the effective simplified procedure of enforcement of the Russian asset with the possibility to lift jurisdictional immunity from enforcement of the Compensation Commission's decisions. But what we ask the states now is to keep, to maintain measures at keeping the frozen blocked Russian assets until the legal solution is found with their seizure to the compensation fund. So, that is what we call an incremental approach. That is how the government of Ukraine decided to move in order to implement the resolution of the General Assembly, as well as the decisions of Committee of Ministries. And that is how we see the process of establishment of the compensation mechanism per se. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for that and for all the work that you've done behind the scenes to deliver this project. So, now can I go on to Professor Hess?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, distinguished members of the committee, distinguished vice minister. I prepared a PowerPoint presentation. And I'm wondering where it is I have sent it. Could you switch it on and maybe you have some device for me to? Okay, thank you very much. So, my presentation is not so, my presentation is not so much about how to establish such a claims commission, but about the question which has already been raised. One is how to transfer seized and released assets of the Russian Federation to Ukrainian victims for compensation purposes. To what extent are Russian assets or assets of Russian citizens, the oligarchs, protected from such measures? And I would also like to address impact of private law litigation in this context. Let's start with the status quo. We are talking about different assets. Down discuss the figures. I think it's a little bit unclear how much money has already been seized. So, we have three types of assets which are of importance. First, the Russian central banks assets. These are most of the most important parts. We have Russian state property, so especially state-controlled entities like Gazprom, for instance, but also other investments of very different types. And then we have the most prominent assets, those of the oligarchs which are very often shown in the press. The legal basis of the sanctions, I don't address them here in detail. You know that they have been effective. And we have sanctions of the European Union and the United States. And the important issue is, as long we are talking about sanctions, these are temporary measures until the situation is over. And as you said, it is important to keep these sanctions until the moment the assets are needed for additional purposes. And the additional purpose is the confiscation. Is it possible to confiscate, to expropriate these assets of the Russian Central Bank, Russia itself, the oligarchs and other persons? So, the starting point is quite clear. Russia is under international law responsible for the war of aggression and has to compensate all damages to the Ukraine under public international law. The interesting issue here is, could the expropriation and the transfer of assets work as a countermeasure of the supporting or willing states? And if you look at the International Law Commission's draft articles on state responsibility which had been adopted briefly after the millennium, there is one article about countermeasures, also countermeasures of third states. It's very cautious in the sense it's not forbidden. There is a development of public international law in this regard, but as an example, the International Law Commission expressly mentioned aggression. So, I think this is of interest and helpful here. So, this would be a legal basis for measures, even measures which might go against other norms of public international law, and we have to look at them. So, do we have precedents? I don't want to talk in length about this. We had especially the reparations after Second World War. The interesting point here is there were expropriations of German assets located abroad in the allied states, but also in third states which were transferred to the Paris Agency, the Interallight Reparations Commission, and were also distributed to the allied states. We have also the peace treaties. Then we had already heard about the United Nations Compensation Commission after the Gulf War, which terminated its work the beginning of this year. 2.7 million individual claims have been assessed. We're in thirty years. So, this is also something one has to be aware. These mass claims will last long because there are so many claims. And we have also addressed already the register of the United Nations General Assembly regarding West Bank and Gaza. We have now to look at the missing framework. Where can we find legal grounds for these measures? Today, we have no international treaty with Russia on compensation. This might hopefully change one day, but at the moment, there is no way to deal with Russia. And there is, of course, no possibility to get a decision of the Security Council light in the after the first Gulf War because Russia will make veto. What we do have, and this has already been mentioned, is the resolution of the United Nations General Assembly, which recommends the creation of a register by UN member states, those who are willing to support Ukraine in this reparation task. And now I would like to talk a little bit more in detail about additional impediments which might here be of relevance. The first impediment might be seen in public international law by the immunity of states. The immunity goes in two directions. It's immunity from jurisdiction and it's also immunity from enforcement. And as far as state banks are concerned, and there is a UN convention on sovereign immunities, which was adapted by the General Assembly briefly after the millennium, it has not yet entered into force. Twenty-three states have ratified it. They need thirty states to enter into force, but it is largely seen as a reflection of customary international law on state immunity, also recognized by the International Court of Justice in the famous case Germany versus Italy in 2012. And according to this convention, Article 21, first paragraph, letter C, national central banks are specifically protected and immune from execution. However, the situation is not as clear-cut as it might appear according to this provision. So, there has been, for instance, a judgment last year of the Swedish Supreme Court. So there has been, for instance, a judgment last year of the Swedish Supreme Court, the so-called Escom decision. It was about Kazakhstan and the Central Bank of Kazakhstan. And here the Swedish Supreme Court in a very detailed judgment distinguished different types of accounts with different protection held by national central banks. So bank accounts abroad, not in Russia, but in other states. And here the Swedish Supreme Court said, in case money is invested, sovereign wealth, wealth funds especially, then the situation is different. It's used for commercial purposes. And there is only a final purpose to augment the wealth and the assets of the state. So these parts of the accounts can be taken. This is not the only decision which goes in this direction, but the most recent one. And I think this is a very interesting development and shows that with regard to state immunity, the situation is moving. Let's look at the second source, the oligarchs. Here, the situation is more complicated than the well aware that this committee is. Has already dealt with it, especially expropriation usually requires a criminal conviction. And this criminal conviction might not be easy to get. The European Union is going in a way where they say when there are assets which have been object of sanctions, evading sanctions might become a criminal offence and as a consequence assets might be expropriated. It goes a little bit around the corner. Let's put it that way. I'm not so absolutely convinced that one might go that way. On the other hand, as we are here in the framework of the European Convention of Human Rights, we are of course, when it comes to property, also in the situation of specific protection by Article One of the First Editional Protocol, expropriation is not permitted. However, there are some precedents concerning Malta and concerning Georgia, where assets had been acquired under dubious circumstances. So for instance, by persons belonging to the mafia or by persons belong, or by public officials who got extremely rich because of corruption. Here one might consider going with rebuttal of the presumption. But I think this is of course a measure to be reflected. Let's put it that way. So this is, but might be one point. Finally, just to make the whole picture here, there might also be an additional protection of these assets by bilateral investment treaties concluded by some EU member states with Russia. However, here again we have a lot of open issues. First of all, the question is, do state banks fall under the protection of investment by lateral investment treaties? It depends on the wording of the treaty, but usually not. Yeah, so it might be different when a state bank invests money. Then the additional question is, a bank account or investments as such, certainly not if there is only made transfers. So again, here the protection might not apply to state banks. But on the other hand, when it comes to the oligarchs, I would say there is a high probability that there is a litigation risk. And it depends now again on the wording of the different BITs. To what extent expropriation is excluded and to what extent fair and equitable treatment might be affected. So here is a risk, at least a litigation risk. Let's look finally at private international law in this context. So the idea would be to bring civil lawsuits against Russia. And the prospects of these civil lawsuits are not very high in the European Union. It's not a question of the Brussels system. It goes according to the national domestic laws of the member states. The most important impediment here is immunity of state. And there is a restriction of the immunity regarding commercial activities. A war is not a commercial activity, but there is an additional exception from immunity, which is called non-commercial tort exception. A tort committed by an agent or the foreign state in the territory of the state whose tribunals assist. This does not give any exception from immunity in the European Union because the war takes place in the Ukraine, nor in the US. They have a terrorist exception, but as so far Russia is not on the list of terrorist states. And it only applies to American citizen. But there is a very interesting development in the Ukraine itself, where the Ukrainian Supreme Court in April of this year permitted a lawsuit against Russia of a woman who had lost her husband in the war. And the court applied the non-commercial tort exception from immunity. And this might be a starting point for mass litigation in the Ukraine, maybe organized by the civil society and its representatives. So this is an interesting development. However, the question is of course, could such a judgment be recognized and enforced in other states? So in the European Union, in the United Kingdom or in the United States? This will entail that the decision of the Ukrainian courts on immunity will be and must be reviewed by the courts of the state where recognition is sought. This is the first step. So the development which has been made by the Ukrainian Supreme Court has to be taken up by other courts too. And then finally, we have again the problem of immunity from enforcement when it comes to the different assets, what I had already addressed with regard to state banks. You need at least assets which have a purpose which is commercial. And this needs, they need to be traced and then they might be used for enforcement. Situation in this regard is, in the US is even more difficult because recognition and enforcement depends on the different state laws. I don't go into the details. You can ask me in the discussion. Thank you very much for your attention.
Well, thank you very much indeed for that comprehensive brief on current state of the law and where it might be going. The first person I'm going to invite to ask a question is Mr. Kalchenko, who's online from Ukraine. Welcome, Mr. Kalchenko. Would you like to make your point, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. First of all, I would like to express my gratitude to both guests, both experts, and also to you, Mr. Chairman, for your remarks at the beginning of hearing. It's really unspeakable behavior of the aggressor that does everything is possible in its availability to make Ukrainian people suffer from absence, lack or storage of electricity, heating, water supplies, everything possible. So I think we even may not speak about possible genocide as it's still in some of the documents. It's really a real genocide. I have a question to, for Madame Deputy Justice Ministry of Ukraine, Madame Mudra. Madame Mudra, several months ago, you participated online in a hearing conducted by the Committee on Legal Affairs of the European Parliament. You participated online in that hearing and also head of the task force established at the European Union participated and a representative of the Ministry of Justice of the United States. So you made very substantial presentation, in my opinion, on that hearing. I watched it. Could you please share with us whether there have been any practical developments made by the European Union or other states, as Professor has used this term, supporting states? So have there been any practical steps since that hearing in the European Parliament that would further, let's say, support the establishment and implementation of that Compensation Mechanism? Thank you.
I'm going to ask Mr. Merz to answer that specific question so we can keep focused. Thank you.
Yes, definitely. Thank you very much. Thank you for the question. Exactly what I presented today is the pure practical steps which are taken by the government of Ukraine together with its allies. And the ANGA resolution which was taken after that's the first my presentation of mine is the exact evidence that the many, many states do support the concept of the Compensation Mechanism. Why I said in my presentation that we have taken incremental approach, all our steps lead towards the building of a comprehensive Compensation Mechanism, but the first very step which is the most immediate now is to do our best in order to collect and preserve and save all the evidences so that they are not damaged, they are not lost. Because this register together with this information will make the basis, the ground for the Compensation Mechanism. And if to answer the question about the support of other states, what we see? First, we see the staff of Canada introducing the amendments to their law aimed at confiscation of private and sovereign assets. Then we are working with the congressmen from the states in order to introduce their similar or almost similar amendments into the US legislation. Also, we see the steps taken by the European Union, for example, the directive aimed at confiscation of private assets of those persons who tried to circumvent sanctions and to criminalize the circumvention of sanctions. So now we are in a very active phase of discussing with a few European cities who expressed interest in hosting the register with the future transformation of this registry into Claims Commission. And we are almost about to agree on the detailed provisions of our cooperation. And we expect that within three months, next three months, we will be ready to show this interest and to show who is the hosting country might be. So we do expect that taking into account that we are caring about the enforcement of the decisions of European Court of Human Rights, which unfortunately today do not have any realistic tool for being executed. And the ICJ's decision that the Council of Europe will be very active and supporting us in having this agreement with the member states. So early next week, we are conducting the so-called diplomatic conference at the level of G7. And next week, we will have the meeting with legal advisers of G7 so that to read the issues related to registry of damage. So all these steps have been practical once. And for, well, three or four months after I spoke at that meeting, I think that we are quite progressed and advanced in taking these steps and in implementing the ANGA resolution.
Oui, merci Monsieur le Président. J'ai été très intéressé comme l'ensemble.
Well, I was very interested by the two statements we've just heard, the presentation by the Vice Minister and by the Law Professor. I'm sure this is true of other members of the Commission as well. The question is making sure that Russia pays for the colossal damage that it has caused in Ukraine. But this is a very difficult legally speaking, but we mustn't abandon hope here. And I would like to make a modest contribution by recalling a committee that I presented to the committee and in plenary a few months ago on the confiscation of criminal assets. I took the example of what's happening with the mafia in Italy. And I'd like to stress a particular point naturally. The lawyers we have in the room may correct me, but it consists in reversing the burden of proof. And I'm sure the legal experts here will understand that is, instead of proving that the Russian oligarchs stole the money that they hold temporarily, I hope, and which is currently frozen in our banks and in our financial institutions, instead of it being the arms states that have to prove that these are ill-gotten gains, it would be up to the Russian oligarchs to demonstrate that this money was acquired honestly. That changes the situation considerably and it makes it much, it facilitates the situation when one wishes to confiscate or expropriate criminal assets. Thank you.
Mr. Lucenko?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. First of all, I would like also to thank both guests because they are two interventions showed us a complete picture. Because Madame Vice Deputy Minister said about the organizational questions and issues, how to organize that Compensation Mechanism. And Professor Hess said about the legal possibilities, how we could fill in the Compensation Mechanism with the Russian money. So that's two parts of the puzzle and thanks to both of you for that. Madame Deputy Minister mentioned several times that that mechanisms could be maybe the only, because that's my position, maybe the only effective mechanism how to implement the decisions of the ECHR against the Russian Federation. Because today we have no absolute mechanism how to implement the decisions against the Russian Federation. And you are absolutely, absolutely right in that. And you are also absolutely right saying that the member states of the Council of Europe should join the agreement for the Compensation Mechanism, which is important just for the member states. But my question is, how do you see, how do you see the role of the Council of Europe as a whole in that process? Because you see, there are two approaches. Just one is that the Council of Europe could play a leading role in that decision, in that direction, sorry. And could be the leader in that, because as I mentioned, that will be the only mechanism how to implement the decision of our court, I mean the ECHR. The second position is that we can be like a vegetarian organization, just making some comments, making some maybe helpful decisions, but we will be not the leaders of that. So the question is, how do you see the role of the Council, the practical role of the Council of Europe in the question of establishing of the Compensation Mechanism? Thank you.
Puska?
Thank you, Chair. Well, Madame Mudra, sir, thank you for your presentation. I really appreciate that you have found time to be here and to explain us a little bit more on your proposal. Indeed, Albania is helping a lot in the United Nations Security Council. We have been joint pen holders with the United States for all the resolution to stop and to deny the aggression in Ukraine and as well to find concrete mechanism how to help Ukraine people and possibly give an end to this war. However, things are happening and we need to address problems. So in my perspective, what you are proposing, as you presented, do have a lot of question marks in order for us to be clear how everybody can contribute. But I am mostly concerned in two issues that I think are of the moment, that might die ich den Moment meiner Meinung nach helfen, die die Ukraine zu helfen, und auch die anderen Vorschläge, die für den compensativen Mechanismus effektiv sein könnten. Sie befinden sich im Prozess im internationalen Gerichtshof für Genozid, die Ukraine gegen Russland. Über Genozid unter der Convention, die Prävention und die Verachtung von Genozid. Es gibt andere EU-Mitgliedstaaten und andere Staaten, die der Prozess der Ukraine unterstützen. Wird das Prozess hinsichtlich des Prozesses helfen, was Sie tun, in Sachen compensieren? Könnten es zu Verknüpfungen geben? Denn ich glaube, internationale Organisationen sind keine Inseln, und wir müssen Synergien zwischen allen Organisationen schaffen, um effektive Schutzmittel zu haben. Die zweite Frage ist bezüglich Beweise. Sie haben im Moment viele Necessitäten. Wie sammeln wir Beweise? Wie sollen diese Beweise legal sein? Wie soll diese Beweis in welcher Mechanismus morgen verwendet werden, um die Wahrheit zu verrichten, die Aggressor verachtet, etc.? Und natürlich um den compensativen Mechanismus zu gewinnen. Denken Sie, dass der Council of Europe, die Parlamentarische Assemply, Ihnen helfen kann, konkret Beweise zu sammeln und sie für den Gewinn des Kriegs der Ukraine zu machen? In welcher Prozess morgen? Danke.
Können wir versuchen, diese drei Fragen zu beantworten? Dann haben wir noch ein paar Fragen. Bitte. Will der Professor zunächst einmal sprechen?
Ich denke, ich werde relativ kurz hier sein. Denn es geht sehr um die politische Seite. Ich finde es sehr gut, zu beginnen, Beweise zu sammeln und den Prozess zu starten, denn anderes wird verloren. Außerdem sehe ich die Prozesse vor dem internationalen Gerichtshof sehr positiv. Denn im Moment steht der Gerichtshof wirklich, dass es eine solche Verletzung der öffentlichen internationale peremptorisatur gibt. Dies enthält, dass Reparations notwendig sind. Also denke ich, es geht nicht um eine Kriegsverletzung. Aber trotzdem wird dies zeigen, wie die Situation legal ist. Und letztendlich ist dies eine Situation, die natürlich extrem ist. Und es erfordert auch legalere Antworten. Ich sehe die Aufgabe der Rechtspfarrer, Juristen, dass man Möglichkeiten nehmen muss, um den Ukrainern den compensativen Mechanismus zu geben. Es gibt einige Fälle aus der Europäischen Gerichtshof für Kapitalien, die in einer sehr dünne Art und Weise eingerichtet wurden. Man sollte diese Fälle nehmen und wie Sie es gesagt haben, in eine Richtung der Beweisbelastung zurückkehren. Natürlich wird dies nicht allein von Oligarchen exkludieren. Ich bin ein Experte im LAB, Expertkomitee des Council of Europe. Wir haben in der Königreich several Fälle gelesen, die von Oligarchen gehandelt wurden. Sie haben Geld, sie haben Rechtspfarrer, sie haben Mittel, um zu verhandeln. Dies ist zu erwarten. Aber dies geht zum Gericht und es muss dort sein und es muss dort entschieden werden.
Danke. Bei den Oligarchen und ihrem Geld und dem Belastungsbeweis stimme ich total dazu, dass es ein Nexus zwischen dem Oligarch und seinen Aktionen und was in der Ukraine passiert und diesen Verletzungen gibt. Auch eine der Quellen für den compensativen Fund ist das Geld von Oligarchen. Wir setzen unser Fokus auf souveränes Geld, auf souveräne Kapitalien, denn kein Nexus sollte hier entstehen. Es gibt den Staat, den Aggressorstaat. Es gibt Verletzungen, die bestätigt wurden. Dieser Staat ist verpflichtet, dem internationalen Gesetz Reparations zu machen. Der Fokus liegt auf dem Geld, das im Zentralbanken gesperrt wird, und auf den Kapitalen der Staatgebiete, die als Alterregus behandelt werden können. Das ist natürlich der Grund, dass die Prozesse bezüglich der privaten Kapitalien für die Zukunft durch Gerichte verhandelt werden. Denn es ist im Moment in der Ukraine unter dieser speziellen Gesetz in Europa stattfinden wird. Es wird nicht ein schnelles Prozess sein. Denn wie der Professor sagte, sie haben Geld, sie werden bis zum Ende kämpfen. Aber wir müssen uns auf ihr souveränes Geld konzentrieren. Beziehungsweise die Rolle des Council of Europe. Natürlich als die führende regionalisierte Organisation, mit der Hauptpriorität für die Schutz der Menschenrechte, sehen wir den Council of Europe so gut wie möglich. Und definitiv könnte der Council of Europe die multilateral internationale Vereinbarkeit sein. Während der Register gestellt wird, könnte es auch als Plattform für den Register angesehen werden, wenn der Council of Europe den Bereichen genügend Unterstützung bereitet. Ich verstehe, dass es Finanzen geben könnte. Wie immer sind Finanzen die Frage. Aber wir sprechen mit den IFIs, die das unterstützen können. Aber wir würden definitiv dem Council of Europe bitten, die Mitgliedstaaten, die Parteien dieses Vereinbarments zu empfehlen. Beziehungsweise, und wir wissen, dass im nächsten Mai 2023 der Komitee für Ministerien ein Summit geben wird. Also fordern wir oder würden wir den Komitee für Ministerien bitten, die Ukraine als zentrische Frage zu stellen und solid Entscheidungen über die Schaffung des compensativen Mechanismus und über die Einladung der Mitgliedstaaten, in dieses Mechanismus zu beteiligen und über die Schaffung des Ad-hoc Tribunal für den Verbrechen gegen die Ukraine. Also fordern wir dem Council of Europe und dem Komitee für Ministerien, diese zwei Themen als zentrische Fragen zu stellen. Ja, wir haben die Prozesse vor dem internationalen Gerichtshof. Obwohl es nicht von uns initiiert wurde unter der Genozidkonvention. Es ist eher eine Reaktion auf die Verlegungen der russischen Föderation unter dieser Konvention. Denn sie benutzen die Konvention falsch, indem sie die spezielle Operation wegen Genozids durch die Ukraine gegen die Menschen in Donetsk, Lugansk starteten. Aber wir werden definitiv in unsere Antragstellung die Frage der Reparation inkludieren. Es wird Teil der Antragstellung sein. Es gibt bereits 23 Staaten in dieser Prozession involviert und 25 Staaten in der Prozession der ECHR, die sehr gute politische Unterstützung beider Prozesse hatten. Und in beiden Prozessen werden Verletzungen benötigt. Aber wir müssen aufmerksam halten, dass diese Prozesse nicht schnell sind. Sie werden Jahre und Jahre dauern. Wir können uns das erinnern, was wir 2014 initiiert haben bezüglich Kriemer. Also einige davon, nur eines davon, hat den juristischen Punkt über die Admissibilität durchgeführt. Und der Donetsk, zum Beispiel, der Fall der Ukraine und der Niederlande gegen Russland, sind bislang nicht in der Entscheidung über die Admissibilität. Und es ist bereits geschlossen, seit acht Jahren. Also erwarten wir nicht, dass dies ein schnelles ist. Obwohl es beide Institutionen und beide juristische Hürden gibt, wird definitiv in das compensativen Mechanismus eingebunden. Aber wir hoffen, dass dieses Mechanismus früher gestellt werden wird, als diese Entscheidungen durchgeführt werden. Aber wenn sie verfügbar und erfüllbar sind, sollte dieses Mechanismus definitiv die Monetisierung dieser Entscheidung durch Geld oder welche Quelle des compensativen Fundes sein, um diese Entscheidungen zu bezahlen.
Danke, Herr Präsident. Ich danke beide unsere Gäste. Ich habe eine Frage, hauptsächlich zu Frau Ministerin. Wir hatten tatsächlich eine Sitzung im Ministerium für Justiz im Juni, als wir Kiew besuchten, als Subkomitee. Und es gab Gespräche über all diese Mechanismen, die Frau Ministerin und ich noch erinnern. Und ich frage mich, ob es sich ändert, seitdem, insbesondere im Kontext der Bewegung für die Resolution, initiiert worden, von unserem Kollegen Dimitri Natalouka aus der Ukraine, den ich auch unterschrieben habe, bezüglich der Erfindung der legalen Wege, um die russische Veto-Power in der UN-Sicherheitskonferenz zu überqueren. Ich frage mich, ob der Minister für Justiz, als die führende juristische Autorität in der Ukraine, eine Strategie oder vielleicht sogar einen Plan hat. Natürlich, wenn es uns zugestimmt werden kann, wäre ich sehr dankbar, Frau Ministerin. Vielen Dank.
Ja, vielen Dank, Herr Präsident. Ich möchte eine Frage zu beiden distinguierten Panelisten beantworten. Falls ich etwas verpasst habe, bitte mir das in advance. Ich möchte nicht in die Richtung des compensativen Mechanismus gehen. Ich möchte eher zurückgehen zu der Verantwortung versus Unfreiheit innerhalb des internationalen Gesetzes. Und hier wurde Russland bereits am 3. März 2014 von den Außenministern der Europäischen Union in Brüssel für Verbrechen basierend auf meiner Vorschlaglage verurteilt. Dies war, wie es ist, die Basis für den Regime der Sanktionen, die leider sehr schwach war, für andere Gründe. Jetzt diskutieren wir nicht über, es wurde erwähnt, über den Genozid. Ich bin interessiert bei den Verbrechen. Und wie wir wissen, gibt es diese Diskussion. Der Verbrechen ist nicht gleich wie Kriegsverbrechen, der Verbrechen von Genozid. Es ist politischer, es ist nicht legal, aber es ist politischer, denn es ist beziehungsweise zu den Aktionen des Staates und der Leiter, die es politisch mehr kompliziert macht, sagen wir es einfach. Um die politische Willen zu reunaten. Ich werde es sehr direkt formulieren. Definitiv bin ich among die, die sehr unterstützend für die Verantwortung zu garantieren sind. Either durch ein Mechanismus, das aktuell funktioniert, aber dies ist eine Frage der Jurisdiktion, oder durch ein Ad-hoc internationaler Gericht, aber auch um den Recht zu garantieren, die Entscheidung zu treffen, die Verantwortlichen. Ich bin interessiert, dieses Verbrechen zu betrachten und wie Sie in spezifischen juristischen Hinsätzen die Möglichkeit sehen, die Verantwortung zu garantieren, wissend das Fakt, dass wir das Substantiell gesetzt haben, seit dem London Convention von 1933, die für die erste Mal im internationalen Gesetz das Verbrechen basierend auf ist. Leben ist ironisch. Basierend auf einer gemeinsamen Vorschlag von Maxim Litvinov, dem sowjetischen Kommissar für Außenreligionen, und dem rumänischen Außenminister Nikolai Tulewsko, und dann von den gleichen Substanzen von verschiedenen UN-Resolutions und sehr jüngst von den Kampala-Gewerkschaften von 2010 bis zum Rome Statute. Wie sehen Sie in spezifischen juristischen Hinsätzen die Möglichkeit, die Verantwortung zu garantieren, either von einem oder anderen Lösungssystem? Wie sehen Sie das? Danke.
Ich habe zwei Fragen zu Prof. Hess. Meine erste Frage ist: Wenn Sie glauben, dass es eine Art gibt, ein Register, wie beschrieben worden ist, der eine russische Föderation legal binden kann, ohne eine Verhandlung mit ihr oder ohne eine Entscheidung des Sicherheitskonferenzen? Wie wir wissen, ist das compensativen Mechanismus des Irak ein subsidiärer Organ des Sicherheitskonferenzen. Meine zweite Frage ist: Ich fand wirklich faszinierend, Ihre Narrativ oder die Entwicklung des Konzepts, sagen wir es einfach, Souveränimmunität. Aber wie Sie verstanden haben, suggerieren Sie, ein neues Verständnis zu haben, über die Behauptungen des Heikke-Gesetzes über die Entscheidung Italiens gegen Deutschland, warum dieses neue Verständnis nicht auf die anderen Reparationsverleihen , die heute existieren? Wie wir wissen, Polen und Griechen haben offiziell Hunderte Millionen Euro gegen Deutschland. Und es gibt eine ähnliche Beziehung zu allen juristischen Mechanismen, die Sie beschrieben haben. Da es eine Entscheidung des ukrainischen Superjustizgesetzes gibt, gibt es eine Entscheidung des griechischen Superjustizgesetzes. Der einzige Hindernis ist nur das tatsächliche Verständnis über Souveränimmunität. Wenn wir davon entfernt sind, könnten wir das auch Polen und Griechen annehmen? Ja, vielen Dank.
Vielen Dank. Ich starte mit den neuesten Fragen. Wie Sie wissen, es gab die Entscheidung des internationalen Gerichtshofs im Fall Deutschland gegen Italiens, Griechen, involviert. Wo der international Gerichtshof deutlich gesagt hat, dass es eine sehr schwierige Verletzung des internationalen Gesetzes ist, das nicht die Immunität verändert. Der eine geht um Jurisdiktion, der andere geht um Substanzen. Es wurde von vielen kritisiert. Ja, die Entscheidung des ukrainischen Superjustizgesetzes geht in eine andere Richtung, denn es geht zu dieser Nicht kommerziellen Torte. Ja, das ist nicht so. Es ist nicht die Idee, wenn eine peremptorische Norm des internationalen Gesetzes verletzt wird, die Immunität muss abreißen. Und Sie können gegen den Verbrecher eingehen. Sie wollen ein Krimineller. Aber das, according to the judgment of the international court of justice, und ich sehe auch eine große Unterstützung dieses Entscheidens in internationaler Praxis. Es wurde vor fast zehn Jahren gesagt. Es wurde sofort von der Italienischen Verfassung gestellt. Jetzt ist es wieder bevor der international Gerichtshof. Ich würde dies retroaktiv beziehen. Ja, aber es könnte eine Entwicklung in der Gesetzgebung der immunitären Gesetzgebung geben. Zu meiner Meinung geht es eher um die Nicht kommerzielle Torte und nicht so viel um die Idee, dass Verletzungen von mandatory use cogens eine Ausnahme für die Immunität sind. Aber was Sie hier erreichen, ist ein sehr wichtiger Punkt. Lassen Sie mich klar sagen. Wir sprechen hier über eine sehr gefährliche, unjugendliche Krieg, der erschienen ist. Aber wir schauen auch auf die Entwicklung der Gesetzgebung für die Zukunft. Und dies bedeutet, es geht nicht nur um die Ukraine. Und besonders wenn wir uns die immunitäre Gesetzgebung anschauen, muss man bewusst sein, dass die schlechten Jungs geschützt sind. Aber im Interesse der Maitänz der internationalen Beziehungen und internationaler ökonomischen Beziehungen. Also gehen wir in eine neue Richtung, es gibt immer Risiken. Das ist auch etwas, was ich hier ganz klar machen wollte. Ich bin nicht der Person, die sagt, tut es nicht. Ich denke, die Gesetzgebung braucht auch gute Antworten, aber gerechte Antworten. Das ist sehr wichtig. Für mich würde eine legalere Basis im internationalen Gesetz gegen die Kriegsverletzung verteidigen. Und dann strikt Proportionalität, sehr klare Prozesse, die alle Prozessgarantien der Europäischen Convention für Menschenrechte respektieren, auch für die Personen, die Verantwortlichen sind und die Kapitalien verlieren, etc., inklusive Russlands selbst. Eine völlig andere Frage ist natürlich die Verantwortung. Im Sinne, dass diejenigen, die für dieses Verbrechen und für dieses Verletzen verantwortlich sind, nicht kriminelle Verachtung bekommen. Aber dies ist etwas, was wir nicht einfach machen können. Dies könnte eines Tages passieren. Aber man muss sehr klar sein, dass dies eine Position unter dem internationalen Gesetz ist. Es ist eine Verantwortung für den Verbrechen.
Just a couple of comments to echo what Professor has said about the sovereign immunity. It's clear that we are dealing with the states, well, no similar actions have been done in the past. I mean, the state which grossly violates human rights, the state which kills civilian civil infrastructure deliberately, the state which violated sacred charter of the United Nations, the state that having using, used its seat as a permanent member in the UN Security Council, deliberately blocks all the decisions in its interest. So it's quite, although it might seem similar to the previous precedents of occupying territories, but it is done with huge kind of aggression. And if it is stated that it is an act of aggression, if it is clear that highest political and military leadership should be brought to responsibility, to criminal responsibility, when the state violates the ICJ judgments, ICJ provisional orders, there should be the place to introduce countermeasures and there should be a place to lift sovereign immunity from the assets of such a state. With regards to the Security Council and bypassing veto power of Russian Federation, unfortunately, it's not under the auspices of Ministry of Justice. It's more the Ministry of Foreign Affairs dealing with that. But we definitely support those actions and attempts of our colleagues and parliamentaries in order to either exclude Russia from the Security Council or to take out the permanent seats from Russia, or at least to limit the possibility to use veto power when it goes about the aggression of this specific member of Security Council. And members of the parliament and government of Ukraine are dealing in order to pass this decision and resolution. With regards to the crime aggression, I totally agree that unfortunately today, none of the existing legal avenues like domestic law enforcement or ICC have the mandate to investigate and prosecute crime for aggression against Ukraine. Neither Ukraine nor Russia have ratified Rome Statute and Russia didn't sign Kampala amendments. So there is no place for ICC, unfortunately, to investigate or to prosecute the crime of aggression. That's why our country, our people, president, government and entire parliament, we do call to support the establishment of this special tribunal for the crime of aggression. The forums of the establishment of this tribunal might be discussed and there is still room for discussion, but this tribunal should be established and this is the only legal tool to assure the accountability of the particular persons who provided order to start this war of aggression. Well, yeah, and with regards to the question about the binding nature of the register, right? So first of all, we are talking now about the registry, so the platform or the database where all the information about damage, all the evidences will be collected. For that, no consent of the other party is needed because this, and this we want to do together with the help, with the assistance of our allies, so that it's transparent, credible, trustworthy, so it will be done, it will be hosted, located in the European city with the proper experience in hosting such registries and organisations and with proper expertise. And coming back to the question where Council of Europe might help, also the, it might be useful for the expertise to be provided in order to properly collect and properly store and process these evidences. So we do think that there is such experience and expertise in the Council of Europe. With regards to further transferring the registry into the compensation mechanism under the international treaty, while Russia is not a member of this party to this treaty or doesn't have any other treaties. Well, first of all, the political and legal, I would say legitimacy was already provided by the General Assembly. 94 states voted for that. Then there will be process of developing of this agreement. It will take time, definitely. And well, we do not know what will be in half a year. Maybe Russia already be the party of some negotiation of some peace, I mean negotiations, and there will be the room for Russia to enter this mechanism, definitely, and we will leave this room, this door open for them. But of course, we will do together with legal experts our best in order to create a proper legal framework for establishing the mechanism and for using Russian assets without its consent if they are not willing to be the party, to be the party to this agreement. Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed for an enormous contribution, both of you, and we much appreciate that. And I don't think if there's any more questions, I think we'd just like to thank you for this and wish you all the best as you travel back to Ukraine and you've got the sympathy of everybody in this room and the whole world, I think, for your plight. And the sooner that this ghastly aggression can be brought to a halt, the better. And that's one of our prayers for the new year.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
We now... Yeah, so where, so this is the urgent, on the same topic, we've got to put the question here. Okay, this report was originally due for debate during the April session for next year, but because of what's happened in Ukraine in recent weeks, we want to take a position well before the fourth summit to be held in May. And the suggestion is that the committee request the bureau to advance the debate on this matter as a matter of urgency and rather, and submit it for a debate under the urgent procedure during the January part session. Now, this means that our rapporteur and the Chair of this committee will submit the draft report for adoption at committee.